The order at 7:30. Gary, can you call the roll?
Scott Fischel.
Here.
Dennis Keeney.
Here.
Denise Brewster.
Here.
Lundegressi.
Here.
And Lori Knessy is absent.
Okay, let's stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I move to amend the agenda to, and this will be, there's an item on the agenda, we'll talk about it almost in conjunction with that. There's a $200,000 of CTE furniture purchase in the 2025 P Permanent Improvement Fund report, and I move to move that to the 2026 fiscal year. Can you get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Gary, can you take the roll?
Scott Fischel.
Aye.
Dennis Keeney.
Aye.
Denise Brewster.
Aye.
Lundegressi.
I, whatever.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
I'd like to know if I can request amend the agenda. I know it will be a moot point, but I'd like to do it anyway.
Okay. Request to amend the agenda?
Yes. I would like to remove or table for further discussion at a later date when all board members can be here. Items A, B, and C, under the Board of Education business.
Okay, so those were two different motions?
Why are those two different motions?
It was one motion to remove all three of those items.
Or table it.
Yeah, I think basically to postpone.
Postpone.
Okay, so you want, okay, to postpone.
We'll use the word postpone.
Postpone, okay.
When all board members can attend.
Okay, and the motion is to postpone items A, B, and C?
Yes.
Is there a second? Hearing none. Move on. And so consent agenda, finance and audit. You can make the motion, and we could, we'll pull, we could pull things out and discuss them individually.
Okay, good, yeah, I do.
After the motions made.
Okay.
Yeah, or we can discuss it after the motion being discussed, then decide to remove it at that point.
Right, right, right.
Either way.
But we'll make the motion first, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so we got A, B, C, D.
Well, A, B, C.
A, B, C.
Okay, A, B, C, okay. Make a motion to approve the agenda items listed on the finance audit. Consent agenda as recommended by the treasurer.
A second.
Any discussion? My discussion is, I guess.
Well, let's, let's vote on that first.
But if that's including, I think, the things you guys wanted to discuss.
Okay, yeah, we'll, we'll pull out the B and C together to discuss because they kind of overlap, and there could be an explanation on those.
Yeah, I mean, you guys can go ahead and discuss it now as part of the consent agenda, and then if you want to remove it and vote it separately, you can do that.
Okay, so maybe at this point it'd be appropriate for you to explain.
Yeah, I'll actually turn it over to Dan McIntyre since he's here today.
Okay.
It's his agenda item, say.
It's agenda item B, and I guess it's also part of C as far as the then and now for some of the work that's done. So part of the representation that my office provides to the district has been representing the district in real property tax complaints, and those include both commercial and non-commercial properties, which are primarily residential, although there are other classifications. Historically, we've done all of that work under the retainer. The retainer was set up to absorb what we call a routine amount of this type of work. However, this year, there was approximately an eight times increase in the amount of work that has historically been done.
So, Dan, can you just explain like in numbers? Okay, how many, how many houses typically are you looking at, and how many were this year?
So somewhere in the range, in a, I'll, I'll compare, try to do a best apples-to-apples comparison because it varies every year.
Yeah, put it on a proxy.
Yeah, more or less in the range of 10 to 20 in a given year, and this year there are more than 160.
Okay, so it's a, it's a little bit out of the norm.
Right, and I've prepared for you, if I could approach the board table. We prepare this each year so that, you know, so that Gary's office can track
Thank you.
the cases, the amount of money that's at jeopardy in each of the cases.
Thank you, Dan, for this. Should we take an hour and read those?
No, no. I can summarize it for you. So this is a listing of all the cases that have been filed as of right now. You'll, you'll know that the deadline for filing tax cases is on a rolling basis. So as things stand right now, this is a listing of everything, and you'll see it's done by the property owner, the address, the parcel number, the type of land use that it is, the auditor's current value, the property owner's opinion of value, where we are with the value, the BoE's valuation, and then the difference between what the auditor has as the value and the owner's opinion of value, and then a potential loss of revenue listed in the far right-hand column. If you go to the last page, you'll see that all of these cases add up to a potential loss of revenue to the district of $197,461. So any one case might not be a large case, but we look at the valuation complaints as, in their totality. And so what we do is we have, because my office represents many districts in this area, we have essentially an efficient system where we compare where what we think the fair market value is with where the owner's opinion of value is, and then a counter complaint is filed on behalf of the district. Each of these cases will be scheduled for a hearing before the Lake County Border Revision. The property owner is almost always present, sometimes with their counsel, sometimes with their appraiser. We are also present, and we submit our evidence in support of the auditor's value, and then the border revision makes a decision based on all the evidence submitted. These cases are often scheduled in blocks, especially when you have as many, because you can imagine how many total cases the Lake County Border Revision has, I mean, several thousand at least, and so we hope to be able to do it as efficiently as possible, maybe as many as 10, 12, 14 cases in a given day. But even if we were doing, say, 16 cases in a day, you're talking about 10 full days of hearings, doing one case after another. So that is the reason for the request. My office estimates that the total cost for this work will be somewhere in the range of $80,000 to $90,000. That's just a rough estimate. For example, if the Lake County Border Revision decides to schedule only five cases in a day, then we're talking about 35 days of hearings. But we're, we're assuming a fair amount of efficiency. We have asked for an increase in the retainer of $50,000 with the difference being that 80 or 90, we would just absorb that as a part of the retainer. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Yeah, question is, what, approximately, what kind of, what a percentage of these cases actually get reduced, you know, historically?
Well, I would say that, you know, it, it's a difficult number to predict, but I would say to, we would probably be in the range of 25 to maybe even as high as 40% reduction. So a potential, a realistic potential loss to the district of probably somewhere around $50,000 to $80,000 in revenue. And again, this is just a, a one-year snapshot, you know, taxes are assessed each year, and so the potential loss could be greater because if it takes longer than one year to do the case, then your law, potential loss automatically doubles. If the case is done quickly and the new value is set and put into the system, then House Bill 920 helps to respread that loss of taxes. But it is, it's still automatically going to be, if there is a reduction, a one-year loss in revenue.
These people are already paying these taxes.
So most people do pay, although you do have the right to estimate what you think your new value is going to be and pay based on that new estimated amount. Most people do not do that, so they, if they're successful, they would get a refund.
There's no precedent about it. People have just taken on a list and, well, and is this the, this is set for the next, what is it, seven years, six years?
So it's a, basically, if the values are revisited every three years.
Oh, every three years, okay.
They do a full reappraisal every six.
Okay.
And then in the alternating third years, they do what's called an update.
Yeah.
They don't actually reappraise, but they do do a market adjustment. So every three years, you'll see values change in some way.
So, so basically, what you've got here, the potential loss of revenue, that's about 50% of their tax increase. They're pretty much paying double that as an increase in their taxes because we get 50, about 50% of their money, right?
Oh, no, this is the loss to the district.
Yeah, this is just the loss to the district.
Correct.
So when I'm looking at a number and I see somebody says $1,200, basically their tax went up $2,400, give or take.
Right, the, the loss to the other taxing authorities is another 50%.
I'm just trying to put it in perspective of what somebody's tax increase was.
So you're showing one year what this would mean, and, and you gave us the percentages that sometimes are changed. But then for the next two years after this.
Well, it's times three.
Yeah.
Three years.
Three years. So the fact is that that's a loss up to us for that period of time. It isn't just one year.
That is correct. Unfortunately, these things with the way taxes are assessed in Ohio, if the, if there is going to be an adjustment in value, and we can make that adjustment, you know, through the border revision process, and that number can be finalized before the auditor certifies the duplicate for next tax year, which would be in, say, late October, early November, then what ends up happening is you, you lose all the inside millage, you know, anything that's an inside millage assessed, portion of this, that's automatically lost. But anything outside the inside millage, essentially that loss of value gets respread under House Bill 920 to the other, all the other owners in a very small fractional amount. And so the actual loss to the district would then only be the inside millage. If it takes more than one year, for example, let's say somebody appeals, they can't certify the new value, and it takes two years to do the appeal, then you're looking at a three-year loss. So in counties less efficient than Lake, every, this is always multiply that 197,000 times three because it just takes forever. In Lake County, they're far more efficient, thankfully, and we can expect to see the vast majority of these cases completed by the end of the summer. But there has been a historic number of cases filed, the border revision only has so many days for hearing, it's going to take them a while, so it's likely that some of these cases will not be completed before the recertification, which will mean if there's a reduction, then it's a two-year loss.
Who sits on the board of revision?
So it's representative of the commissioners, the auditor, and the treasurer, and they have really very good qualified people to hear the cases, and, and again, they're very efficient at the way they schedule. So we're hoping that they schedule, you know, at least two cases in an hour, so there would be eight cases in the morning and eight cases in the afternoon. So that would be 16 cases in a day. But inevitably, somebody says, "I'm on vacation, I can't be there, I can't get off work," and so then they push them down the schedule to later in the summer, and they try to do these sort of catch-up days, but then some, sometimes that doesn't work because this isn't ever their main job, and so while we're available, so things just keep getting rescheduled and rescheduled and rescheduled. Sometimes we'll show up at a hearing day where we have a schedule, a full schedule of 16 cases, and we'll find out only two cases will be heard that day, one at 9:30 in the morning and one at 3:45 in the afternoon. But that's just, you know, that's just how it works, so.
So a question. The auditor has the assessed value, the owner comes in with what they believe their real value is, and then you represent the school district, basically restating what the auditor has said.
We support the auditor's value, correct.
Right, and, and bringing some evidence. So the question I have is, if you were not present, and the auditor, through their stated value, makes a decision, because the auditor is the sole person making this, I mean, basically, I mean, there's, you know, the board, but they, they're, they're the entity that makes the decision on the valuation. So if you weren't there, how much movement in that valuation do you think there would be?
I mean, it's a great question. We, we feel we bring significant value to it because we bring actual evidence to support the auditor's value. When there is a mass appraisal, which the auditor engages in, and you're talking about 100,000 parcels of property in Lake County or more, you, you use what's called a mass appraisal system. You look at large market trends, and you apply those trends to literally thousands of properties simultaneously. What we do in our office is we look at the individual property, and we bring specific data that supports that. So for example, if it's a residential property in a given subdivision, we don't look at other subdivisions, we look at the sales in that subdivision. To try to estimate what I think the auditor or the border revision would do if we weren't there, it's hard to say. I guess I just have always believed that if the voice of the school district isn't a part of the process, you're never going to get the best possible result. We, we, you know, we believe that, we, we've seen it over and over. I do value the border revision's assessment abilities, but at the same time, if we're not feeding and providing really good quality evidence, then, then I just don't know if they're really have the fullest picture of the property because they can't, they can't necessarily do on every single case because they have all of your cases and all the other school districts' cases what we can do on an individual case, so.
So as an overview, what you're saying then is they're looking at it in a mass picture, you're looking at it more, they're a macro, you're more micro. They're not bringing their own micro evidence, which then almost leads credence to an individual challenging some of the valuations because they've not given micro evidence for that evaluation.
No, and we respect all taxpayers' rights to come forward, and we do hear cases where, where we say, you know, I, I actually think the taxpayers got this right. Our job is never to artificially inflate anybody's value. Our job is to make sure that every property in your district is valued fairly so that everyone pays their fair share, not more, but not less.
So in that sense, the Board of Education is actually giving the community a service in actually protecting some of, some of them from the, from the county, from the government, if you will, if they're mass in a macro sense overvaluing their property because they don't have the micro information, and you bring that micro information.
Yes, I believe that it's a one, it's a, an important constituent service to make sure everyone's paying their fair share because if, for example, your neighbor has a home, and we've all experienced this, and that home value is one-third or half of your home's value, and you feel like the two homes are similar, that's not a fair outcome. What we want to see is, you know, if one is too high and one's too low, we have to bring up the one that's too high and lower the one that, that's, that's too high. We want everyone to pay their fair share. That's always been the principle on which this district has pursued these tax complaints and appeals.
So since it's taxpayer dollars that is, that are paying your services.
Yes, sir.
Then it's important to note that those taxpayer dollars are not just looking for more taxpayer dollars from people that are paying your services that they would view against them. You're actually offering a service in the micro, as I just stated, that the county does not offer, and you're actually protecting their interests in some cases. So I just wanted to make that note.
We believe that to be true, absolutely.
The homeowner has, has, there's good evidence for homeowners to bring their complaint in a lot of cases. They can bring their own data. I mean, they, it's, it's not difficult to ascertain that information from records and whatever, you know, and they do.
And they do, and maybe they refinanced recently so they have an appraisal report from their refinancing. That time, that often happens. But in some cases, you know, we're dealing with situations where somebody says, "Well, look at my two neighbors' values, they're lower than mine, why is mine so high?" That's a fair question that anybody has the right to ask. However, this is a process that has to be based on market evidence. So that, it's incumbent on that property owner to say, "My property is too high, not because my neighbors are too low, but because the market data doesn't support the value that's been assigned." And then that, that's where we introduce, on a, basically looking at on a per-square-foot basis, what actual similar properties have sold for.
So Dan, oh, do you have another question?
Yeah, just, I, I see the majority of these are not recent sales. But some of these are recent sales within the last year or so, and the sale price and the valuation price has, you know, a broad distance in between them. And I know all, unless you're in a real cookie cutter subdivision, you know, all, you know, real estate is kind of individual. There, there's some commonalities throughout, but, you know, here, here's a case, one sold October of last year for $29,000. They have it assessed for $153,000. Now, we don't know the particulars about that, but that's a broad gap there. And, you know, it, it should be based on market data, which is arm's length, you know, transaction, you know, all those other things involved, and that's easy to sort out. But some of these, here's another one, it sold for $295,022. They have it at $435,000. Have another one, it sold, that was '21, we're going back a little bit more, '22. I'd say most of these are not recent sales. Here you have one, I don't know what the particulars about that, this was in '22, it sold for $60,000. They have it valued at 525, but the owner says 300. So that would need, need some research in it.
In a lot of cases like that, it's, it could be an estate, I sold it to my kid, like, there's, there's whole lots of circumstances.
Those aren't arm's-length transactions.
Well, but they are, but you wouldn't know that from the state.
Well, no, because when it go, when you go and file that, you have to state that when you file, you know, for trans, for a deed, you have to record, was this an arm's-length transaction or was it sold to a relative? See, those things, I don't know how that's been sorted out at the county. It should be, but you have to know the history of the sale, condition of the property. Have they fixed it up since then? And that should be, then have some permits that were issued in order for upgrades that they could follow that. So yes, if you bought something for $10,000, you put $5,000 into it, and that's documented, well, then the value would probably be $15,000. There, I don't think there would be any argument there, but we see just really large increases in some of these. And here's one sold just a year ago in October, $300,000, they have it as $410,000. And the owner says, "Well, 300,000 is probably the right price." So these are the ones that, you know, I'm a little concerned about. All these others, there have been no recent sales, but there should be, you know, with the mass appraisal, this wasn't a full appraisal, this was an update this year. In three years, we'll have another full appraisal. But the mass appraisal and the computers used to work that, there's a lot of flaws in it, there's a lot, been a lot of arguments, so I think that people have a legitimate right to question it because a lot of the data was corrupted. So I guess we'll have to do what we have to do, but.
On, on recent sale cases, you know, the majority of these are not sale cases, but as you pointed out, there's a handful, more than a handful, that are sale cases. If somebody has a recent sale, and when I say recent, I mean in, within 12 to 18 months of the tax lien date. So the tax lien date for all of these cases, the moment in time that we're looking at this property's value is January 1st, 2024. Taxes in Ohio are done a year in arrears, so even though we're in calendar year '25, we're in tax year '24. And so if somebody has a sale that occurred in '23, even in mid-'22, that's probably a very good indication of the value of that property. However, as you point out, Dennis, that's not the only indication. For example, let's say somebody bought a piece of property for $200,000 and put in $100,000 in improvements. Well, those improvements have to be captured as well because even though they occurred after the sale, they occurred on or around the tax lien date, and so that has to be captured. But our approach has never been to argue with a legitimate sale and to say that it doesn't have true evidentiary value, because it does. We, you know, we, we respect that, but is there more to the story? Was it, was it truly an open-market sale? Was it truly an arm's-length sale? And are there other factors that influence the value of the property? For example, sometimes we see situations where a property sells for $300,000, but then we pull the financing and we see they have a $400,000 mortgage. So then we know there's more to that story that needs to be explored. And so those are, that's our approach to sale cases. We, we never want anyone to feel like the, a true recent open-market arm's-length transaction is something to be ignored. It's probably the best evidence of value, but oftentimes there's more to the story, and we try to be there to be a part of that, so.
That's what the mass appraisal fails to find out, that's all I'm trying to say.
Yeah, agree.
So, Dan, could you please explain, in, in item B, there's a resolution to approve an additional purchase, non-retainer legal services, in the amount of $50,000. And then in C, it says to approve in the amount of $12,495 for non-retainer legal services. Can you explain those two, and do they, do they overlap?
They do. So the $12,495,000, $495 that has been billed already was done to prepare all of the counter complaints and to do all of these filings. So that number is within the $50,000. So what would left, what would be left to be billed would be about $37,500.
That's an accounting item, so it's not $62,000, it's 38, approximately.
Correct.
I just wanted to make that clear for anyone that might look at this.
I understand. Simply, we didn't have a purchase order in place before the work was being completed, and that's what these, any of these that are now over $3,000 or, because of Highway Code 5705. If we don't have a purchase order in place, any amount exceeds $3,000, we have to get board approval just to be able to process that.
Right, so what our treasurer is saying is we're following the law, right, Gary?
Yes.
Yeah, so, okay.
Okay.
Anything further?
I have a question.
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to ask about the, and I think I heard you talk about this before.
I just wanted to ask about the, and I think I heard you talk about this before, but Robert Trump, about the $4,000 for federal program consultant services, is that?
Yeah, he does, he's a consultant, he does all of our non-pubs for Title I. He does make sure that we are in compliance, and if we ever get audited or, he helps make sure that everything is clear. It's a service that is worth.
It's, it's a service that almost no one knows how to do.
Exactly. So he's been retired, he came out of retirement, he went back into retirement. I think he's going back into, I think he's retired for the fourth time or something.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to clarify.
I think we might have a job for Mr. Schlick.
And then some of these other items, are we paying for them? Are they, for example, mowing or, you know, the performances? Is that coming out of a certain fund, that, like, activity fund for that club?
The pool rental fee comes out of the athletic fund. The Concord Youth Baseball comes out of general fund. We've always had an agreement with them that they mow the lawns, and we split. It used to be split three ways, now it's only split two ways, but our max is $3,000 on that one. And the Great Lakes Theater, I'm not 100% sure, it might be an activity fund, but I'm not.
Okay, I just wondered.
For what length of time is that pool rental fee?
That's for the season.
For the season?
Yeah.
Okay, any further discussion? Gary, can you take the roll?
Scott Fischel.
Aye.
Dennis Keeney.
Aye.
Denise Brewster.
Aye.
Linda Grassi.
Aye.
Motion carried. Consent agenda personnel.
Okay, I'd make a motion to approve items A through E listed on personnel consent agenda as recommended by the superintendent. Do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion?
Do we have to vote on these?
Right.
Really sad, really sad to see a lot of these individuals leaving.
Yeah, congratulations to our retirements.
Yes.
And well-earned careers, well-served, and thank you on behalf of the district.
I'm sorry, Mr. Schlick, have you reconsidered? Are you staying another year?
Well, that would mean you were two years past, because the rule changed and, yeah.
It did, and that accelerated the timeframe for some of our retirees to make that decision. And best of luck to both Gary and Chris in their new endeavors.
Yep, and on the retirements, of course, that really didn't affect you, because you were planned anyway, and then they accelerated. But Ms. Lanning, that was a change, and understand a difficult decision to make. But, you know, there is also, with the retirement, an added financial incentive that was part of that, so it's difficult to turn down. So, but congratulations on making that decision. Of course, we saw each other yesterday and.
Thank you. I'm very, yeah.
There's sadness in the district.
There is, it is, there really is. I'm very grateful for the opportunity to have worked in the district for the past 26 years and the people that I work with, so it's, while I'm looking forward to retirement, it's not going to be easy to leave people that I consider family and a place that I consider my home. So thank you.
I was going to call to travel.
What?
That isn't my plan.
You know, you know, like how I'm, I'm.
Maybe I'll, maybe I'll run with you somewhere.
Just call me, I'll go with you. There you go.
Right.
And there's more travel plans in the future.
There is.
Right, and I know how involved your position is, and I totally respect your body of work and what you contributed to this district.
Thank you, thank you. That really means.
Yeah, truly a star, we really appreciate all the work you've done.
Thank you.
So we're going to be calling you for advice from time to time.
As long as I'm not out of the country, I'll answer.
Promise?
No.
I already deleted your number.
I just had.
And probably mine, too.
Yeah, right.
Right. The only other question I had probably for Dr. Retino is the MOU. Is there any changes or updates since you talked to us about it?
Not since I shared the last one.
Okay.
No, we cleared it up, adjusted the years.
Okay.
Yeah, and all of that, so nothing.
Yeah, so it's still accommodate early retirements?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it is true early retirement.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, Gary, take the roll.
Dennis Keeney.
Aye.
Denise Brewster.
Aye.
Linda Grassi.
Aye.
Scott Fischel.
Aye, motion carried. Board of Education Business, GMP for the CTE addition. The Riverside Local School District Board of Education hereby approves the attached guaranteed maximum price amendment to an agreement between Cleveland Construction, Inc. and Riverside Local School District Board of Education for the Riverside Campus Improvement Project at a total cost of $3,229,290. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion.
We have a statement.
Yeah.
Do you want to read that?
Would you like me to read it?
Yeah.
This is a statement from Mrs. Korneski, cannot be here.
I have a hard copy, too.
I do. She asked that we read it into the record, so.
Thank you.
Good morning. Unfortunately, I am unable, let me start over again. Good morning. Unfortunately, I am unable to attend today's Board of Education meeting due to prior professional grievance. I had offered alternative dates to allow full board participation, but unfortunately, the meeting proceeded as scheduled. After speaking with our construction manager, it was confirmed that the meeting could have been postponed until the following week without impacting the project timeline. As a former board president, I have always prioritized ensuring all board members, regardless of differing viewpoints, had the opportunity to participate in important decisions. I believe this collaborative approach is key to effective governance and is, and it is disappointing to see this principle disregarded. I would ask for the board president to take this into consideration in the future. Though I cannot be present today, I want to reaffirm my commitment to serving this board and representing our community. I remain dedicated to advocating for student-centered decision-making, responsible financial management, transparency, and meaningful community involvement. One significant agenda item for today's meeting is the approval of a $500,000 advance from the General Operating Fund of the Permanent Improvement PI Fund. I spoke directly with our treasurer, who explained that this advance was added to the agenda so he could legally certify the funds available in the PI Fund for the construction contracts related to the high school CTE addition and River View expansion. While this advance is expected to be repaid during the next fiscal year, it is essentially a short-term financial maneuver that shifts funds around to present a more favorable financial picture. The greater concern is that our district is deficit spending in the general fund. This advance does not address the district's long-term financial challenges, it merely defers them. Our treasurer feels compelled to take this step because he believes that a majority of the board members will approve this moving forward with the contracts, even if the necessary funds are not available in the PI Fund at the moment, and will look to the administration to find a solution later. This is not sustainable financial planning, and it only postpones inevitable consequences. It is also important to note that our treasurer, Mr. Placko, has previously expressed concerns about funding these capital projects in this manner. He has cautioned the board that relying on internal fund advances, particularly while the district is already in deficit spending, is not a sustainable financial strategy. His professional guidance highlights the risk of shifting money between funds to create the appearance of solvency, and he has advocated for a more responsible, long-term approach. Ignoring that advice not only undermines the role of our financial leadership, but also places our district in a vulnerable position moving forward. Another troubling issue is the dismissal of community feedback. When this plan was initially proposed, members of the public attended meetings and voiced their concerns. These concerns were heard, but ultimately disregarded by the majority of the board. The community now has no meaningful voice, no meaningful outlet to voice their opinions, even though these decisions will have a lasting impact on our district. This situation could have been avoided if the board had developed a comprehensive, long-term strategic plan for the district that is supported by the administration, staff, and community. We have an incredibly talented and qualified administration and staff who are fully capable of creating and executing a plan that addresses both immediate and future needs. It is crucial for the board to trust and empower the experts within our district, allowing them to do their jobs, develop tactical steps, and create a path forward that prioritizes sustainable growth over short-term fixes. I do strongly advocate for transparency, accountability, and giving the community a voice in decisions that affect them. Major capital projects like these should be a part of a larger, well-thought-out plan that includes input from the community. Ensuring that the community's voice is heard and respected instead of the current approach. Instead, the current approach silences those who will ultimately bear the financial burden for years to come. If we continue down this path, prioritizing unplanned capital expenses over operational stability, we risk triggering deeper financial challenges. We owe it to our students, staff, and taxpayers to make sound, transparent, and responsible financial decisions. These choices have long-term consequences, and I believe our community deserves a full and open discussion before committing to this direction. While I cannot be at the meeting today, my request is that board postpone any action on the agenda items related to moving forward with these capital projects. This pause will allow our district administration the necessary time to develop a fiscally responsible plan, one that addresses our facilities without jeopardizing the long-term financial stability of the district. We must ensure any major investment is part of a thoughtful, strategic approach that protects core instructional priorities and does not create undue financial strain in the years to come. Thank you for your understanding. Respectfully, Laura Korneski, Riverside Board of Education member.
Thank you for that. And that is put into the record?
So I would like to, I would like to further the conversation on the items that are up under this section of the board agenda. I'm just going to pass out this worksheet. So I took the liberty of taking the last PI 10-year forecast that Mr. Placko had provided and updated it to include the actual GMP information that we have received and that's in this board agenda. I provided that to Mr. Placko. We had some consensus on what was included in there. And albeit that you've decided that you would like to move the CTE furniture out to 2026 end of year, I want to keep in mind that in this worksheet that I'm providing, we have the $500,000 advance, it's highlighted in gray, it's up on the top of the sheet. And you'll see from year to year, all the way through 2030, we have advances that have to be made back and forth to the PI forecast just based on what had been presented earlier in order to accommodate the pricing that has come in at this time. It has also taken out the buses that were removed from the PI forecast for the year of 2026. So all of those things are in here, and again, this information matched what was provided with us earlier, with the exception of the things that are now highlighted in a different color. It just bears in mind the fact that while we're doing that for this current year, and we're advancing $500,000 to the PI fund, or that's the plan anyway, it's not sustainable for our general fund. When we are in a period of deficit spending within our general fund, it is concerning that we are going out to the year of 2030 and continuing to say, for example, in 2028, that we would have to advance if all things were equal and we continued to spend as this would indicate that we would expect to be spending in our PI fund an amount of $300,000, we might not even have that in 2028. Depending on what happens at the state level with the state budget and the takebacks of property tax dollars, we are assuming that we're even going to have dollars to be able to fund additional projects. And again, this doesn't include the dollars that, our agenda items do not include any dollars for Buckeye, but we have Buckeye in this. And with the prices coming in for the other two additions that we're doing right now, I would anticipate that the expectation that we have for Buckeye is going to be greater than what we already have.
I'm sorry, you said Buckeye is in this, where is Buckeye in this?
Buckeye is down on the last line.
And.
And that's your financing. And that's what Gary had on his PI forecast.
Okay, so you're looking at it as the approximate amount of the payment.
Correct.
On the future loan, if you will, for the Buckeye project.
That is.
Okay, just to be clear.
That was what was provided to us previously on Gary's worksheet, and so I'm just continuing with that. I didn't want to change any other data except what I'm changing, which is the Riverside CTE expansion project, the River View project. And again, and then accounting for the advances that we would need to make going back and forth. Without those, this fund will be insolvent. And we can't have insolvent funds, because per law, every fund has to have a positive balance at the end of the year. Mr. Placko has suggested the transfer only because, and it's not a transfer, I'm sorry, it's an advance. Because advances have to be repaid, transfers do not, so we can't permanently move the money over, because then we would be taking money from the general fund that we wouldn't get back. It's just concerning to me. It is, it's concerning to me. Our general fund can't afford that at this time.
So I think your numbers are a little bit different, which I don't think warrants a lengthy conversation at this time. I think we have a board meeting coming up, and certainly we can delve into that a little bit more. But, yeah, I think your numbers are a little bit different than what other numbers might be as far as projections go. That being said, thank you for your worksheet. Gary, I know that we had met and talked yesterday, and I know there's architectural fees in here. Maybe this is the, might be an appropriate time to explain the architectural fees for the CTE wing. You had mentioned that they were maybe misitemized as to where they would be located in our financing.
One of the things, so in my prior PI projection that was provided previously, I had estimated that $2,250,000 would come out of the, of the CTE grant condition would go out of, come out of the grant fund, not against the PI fund. We also, that $2,250,000 number would actually include the architect fees as well. So the actual amount of the CTE addition is a little bit less than that that would come out of, that would come out of the grant fund, so it would be a little bit more onto the permanent improvement fund.
And how much is that?
It's around $200,000. At the same time, when we originally did the, we originally did the architect contract for the CTE grant back in August of last year, I think it was, or maybe early September, we had planned on doing some improvements to the high school up to about $2.5 million. So there was about $160-some-thousand architect fee that was encumbered for that. We obviously are not doing that at this time, so I was able to take that encumbers off the PI fund. So it kind of, it's a close to a wash between those two variances, because, I mean, $40,000 difference, maybe.
Right, so we were projecting some additional costs in a misstatement of where the $200,000, only is a negative of $40,000.
Right.
Net.
But in the terms of a $2.6 million budget, it's fairly immaterial at this point. It is concerning that our permanent improvement fund balances projected to be as low as it is through several upcoming fiscal years, based on our current spending and based on the projections for Buckeye, which, you know, we know the scope is not fully defined on that, but with the current economy and the way costs have been increasing, it's very concerning, depending on what that ultimate will be.
And so you'll have a new PI statement that shows future balances at the next meeting, right?
I can have that prepared for the next meeting.
And because the item, there's been a couple of changes, and those changes would change the future balances. And the future balances are going to be a lot healthier than the last PI statement. So it would be good to have that for the next meeting.
What kind of, what kind of changes are you suggesting? Because I think Mr. Placko had already updated the forecast for increased property taxes. He had already done that.
Well, there's, one small change is, and I had amended the agenda to put it on, and we'll talk about that, but moving the $200,000. Well, first, let me ask our curriculum director, who's shopping for furniture. Have you started your shopping for the furniture?
I have.
And what have you found?
Well, I, I have to touch base with Ryan to make sure that I have everything covered. I think the, it's, we're going to come in lower than the $200,000. I don't have an exact cost yet, because like I said, I need to make sure which pieces are going into the furniture. So, I mean, we're on the way, it'll be, it'll be ready to go. I have a list.
Do you have an approximate number of how much you think the cost will be?
I feel like we're probably not going to be over $150.
Okay.
Okay.
We might say $40,000 to $50,000.
Yeah, yes, I think that's a reasonable thing, just, but again, that's, I'm saying that with the understanding that I don't, I have to get with Ryan and know exactly how many chairs I need. You know what I mean? Like, how many tables did he plan for? A couple of things like that, so.
Hey, Gary and I were talking about that yesterday, or I was talking about that, and that everyone does things differently, and sometimes you have to start to see where the walls are to see what finishing touches you need and what fits where.
It's funny you say. It's funny you say that, because part of it is, I don't know if he has tool storage built in as far as part of the casework, or if I need to be looking at buying that as part of the furniture. So, it's interesting you say that, 'cause I have a couple of things on there that, and that's why I need to get with him, so that's exactly right.
It should be finalized in the next two or three months?
Oh, for sure. I would say, I would hope by the end of this month, so that, and we can order, I mean, whether we order in June or July is not gonna make a difference, one way or the other, from my perspective, so...
Right, thank you, and that was my point. So, it would, obviously, the furniture will be purchased in the next fiscal year, which starts July 1st.
Right, and that would be fine.
And so, it just made sense to, since we're not purchasing it in '25, to move that $200,000 into the '26 fiscal year. And that was, I was amending the agenda to do that, so we'll get to that.
But that doesn't really change the fact that we're still spending the money. So, whether we spend it this year or whether we spend it and encumber it next year, it doesn't matter.
Thanks for that input. So, if I'll finish my comment.
Right ahead.
Okay, thank you. And so, that'll be a net zero cost. Actually, we're gonna save 50,000 on it.
Oh, but don't...
Well, we're gonna save some money.
Yes, we will save some money, yes.
Okay, whether it's 20, 30, 40, or 50, we'll be saving some money.
We'll be under that 20,000.
Right, right, right. So, thank you for that work. And we had had, just so everyone knows, we had had that discussion previously, and I had asked whatever you could do to shop judiciously.
Cruelly, yes.
And thank you for that, that work. Okay, so, the 200 and most likely less, okay, would be zeroed out, because there is a $200,000 savings in the 2026 permanent improvement fund projection, if anyone knows what that is. Okay? All right, so we have $825,000 projected for a yearly payment, right, Gary? On the, on the money we'll be borrowing for the Buckeye project, let's call it the Buckeye project, which includes Melridge. And we're not gonna be borrowing that money for July, August, September, most likely. That'll be three months that we're not paying, so that'll be about a $206,000 savings on that $825,000. So, that's gonna improve our bottom line by $206,000, assuming that's the case.
Typically, the principal payments are made annually.
Right.
So, it just depends on the timeline of when those payments are going to occur once that borrow is done.
Right, and...
And so, it's really, it could be, it could still be that full, I mean, it's, we're assuming a $12 million borrowing. Obviously, the scope's still in flux, so, and there's also, you could shorten or lengthen that borrowing, so that number is a placeholder. We don't know what it's gonna be until...
Right, and so, assuming that's the number, we're gonna save about $206,000, and we can determine what that yearly payment date is, correct?
I don't think so.
I have something I have to talk to Priscilla about.
Right, and so, there's more that goes into that discussion, which I don't wanna confuse everybody, but we'll have approximately a $206,000 savings on that. And again, there's more information that goes into the timing of the payment, how much the payment is, how much is borrowed, how much that affects our, in that case, the 2026, our present year, numbers. So, anyway, we'll have about a $206,000 savings, which will improve our bottom line by $206,000, and thank you for saving money on the furniture, which will further improve our bottom line by, let's say, tens of thousands of dollars. So, I just wanna make that note. Okay, so, all right, is there any other discussion on the CTE?
Just CTE. We apologize for this brief inter... Okay, it's my understanding there's leftover funds at the state level for CTE that was unused. Are we asking for additional funding?
The Harvard Department of Education reached out in March. They informed all the current grantees that there was additional funds available, and they had a survey form, basically an application that you could fill out to apply for additional funds. And so, I submitted an application. It was April 1st deadline, so it was sometime before April 1st. We applied for an additional $1 million. We have no idea how much money is available, what could be, how many districts applied, how much, you know, it's all unknown, but we put in for that. I sent the follow-up, a couple of follow-ups, and the last thing I heard a couple days ago was they have not made a decision yet, but doing that soon. Don't know what soon means. That could be a week, it could be a month, you know, it could be a year. I don't know what soon, you know?
Realistically, Gary, it has to be done by June 30th, the end of the fiscal year.
I would think that they have to do it by June 30th.
So, we should know soon.
I would assume we'd know something in the next couple of weeks, but it'd be great if we get additional funds, but obviously, we can't.
And you put in for a million?
I put in for a million.
Okay.
Good, thank you for doing that.
Yeah, and so, we had a discussion about that, and thank you for putting in for that, and I did call our state representative, Jamie Calendar, and asked him to go ahead and make a call and advocate on our behalf for those funds and/or the funds that we could receive. And then also, I contacted our state senator, Jerry Serino, and asked him to do the same thing. So, we've done everything we can do, and we'll find out soon, so...
Whatever soon is.
Whatever soon is, right, right. And whatever the amount is, I mean, obviously, a lot of people probably put in, and we'll see what happens.
Right, and who knows if, you know, if districts are able to mobilize that quickly. For us, it's, it's already moving, so it's, we could encumber those funds immediately, where other districts may not have, may not, based on their plans, may not be able to do that. So, I don't know if that's gonna factor in, into that decision or not, but I guess...
So, we moved as quickly and as efficiently as we could.
Right.
Yeah, so, all right, well, good, good on that. Anything else? Can you take the roll?
Denise Brewster?
Aye.
Linda Grassi?
Aye.
Scott Fishel?
Aye.
Dennis Keeney?
Aye.
Motion carried. The GMP for the Riverview addition, the Riverside Local School District, Board of Education hereby approves the attached guaranteed maximum price amendment to an agreement between Cleveland Construction, Inc. and the Riverside Local School Board of Education for the Riverview Elementary School Expansion and Improvement Project at a total cost of $5,64,612. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Discussion?
How much greater was this than our original anticipated projection? Was our original anticipated projection about $4 million?
It was around, I think, 4.4 to 4.5 million. That did not, that budget did not include an estimate for the parking lot portion of it. At the time, it was just for the building piece. I don't think we ever had a formal estimate on the parking lot piece of it, so it came in about $5,64,000, where the GMP came in.
And it includes the parking lot.
I think, includes the parking. I think, we talked about that yesterday, I remember what the number was. There was, I think Roger mentioned there was...
About $450,000.
Yeah, it was the parking and all that.
Yeah, the original, I think, estimates did not include the land that we purchased, you know, so we had no room for a large parking lot at that time.
Right, and so, originally, in a global sense, what I had looked at when we were originally presenting was a $5 million project. I think we're real close to that, and at that time, like Mr. Keeney said, it did not include, after having purchased the three-plus acres from the Sidley family, the parking lot, 'cause we didn't own it, own that at that time, but it has added a substantial cost. Also additionally, we originally were looking at an eight-classroom addition, and the administration asked for an administrative office and a secretary's office accompanied with that, which added about somewhere between $225,000, $250,000. So, we were able to incorporate all that into what I had projected as an original $5 million project, and it looks like we're, we're gonna be pretty close to that. But yes, as we were moving and general construction costs were coming, I think you had noted about 4.3 as a projection, and based on some numbers, you know, people had offered, some preliminary numbers, and then things changed. So, yeah, we had that, and when you look at the parking lot and the administration office and the secretary's office, we're looking at almost $700,000 difference, so we did accommodate that.
And that entrance is like a safe, secure entrance, right?
Correct.
Because you intended it for drop-off, pickup, yeah?
Right, it's a secure entrance, just like we have in the schools now, so...
So, can I ask a question? Because I think we approached this from the very get-go, that this was going to be space that would be utilized for students and potential future growth of students that were coming in from developments that haven't been started yet, but we're not housing new students there. Like, we're moving our preschool there, and we're moving our special ed units around and whatnot, and we're rearranging our current students. We're not creating space for additional students. I just wanna be clear that that's not, like, when we have, we have students coming in from new development behind there, that's not going to house these students, because there's just, it's not adequate space for them.
And I've been to Riverview several times, and, you know, they have very overcrowded conditions. They are so congested in the pods, trying to cover support services. We've taken away the music room. We're trying to reduce the number of rooms we need for, for classes, and some of our class sizes are a little large, that we wanna right-size that school. And as we get in students, we're going to be able to have the space needed. Right now, we had taken away space from, you know, our special education programs, and one was housed at Buckeye, one at Melridge, and so, yes, we are giving that space back, so it's equal in the district. And then also, preschool, to have a presence with perhaps two classrooms, that hasn't been decided yet, but perhaps two classrooms over there and two at Melridge, but we are looking at how that will play out. But right now, we had to move those programs from Buckeye over to Melridge in order to make space to, you know, have the trailers or modular classrooms removed. And so, you know, it's somewhat of a musical chair situation, where we're moving people here, there, but then until construction is done, will everybody fall into place in appropriate spacing?
Right, I think it just, it's just, is confirming that we're not creating spaces for new students, for the influx of students that we'll get with the new developments.
Yeah, you missed the point there.
No, exactly, we are creating space for the students that'll be flowing in, 'cause we have 1,500 homes that are scheduled to be built-
We're not creating spaces for that.
-over the next 12, oh, yes, we are, over the next 12 to 15 years, and some of those are now being built. You said they're not being built? Yes, they are. Fairway Pines is being finished. We have other developments that are starting. Ground has been broken at the casement, and, you know, we, the projected students coming in was the end of the 2026 school year, which is next year, and so, you know, this project's not gonna be built in 30 days, and so, after the project is completed, it will be available for students that are coming in, into the district. There will be approximately enough students to take about one classroom a year. We're hoping that it's a little less than that, so, so that we're not filled up in five years, but it will be a little bit longer, maybe six years, before we're gonna need additional space. But certainly, we're, part of the, what we're solving right now is the overcrowded situation. We're, what's called minus three classrooms right now over there. We do not have enough space for the kids that are there now, and so, we're solving two problems. We're solving the overcrowded condition right now, and we're also making available space for the kids coming in. I know that when I had joined the board, you had suggested, because of the overcrowded situation, we put another trailer, a modular unit at Riverview, which was a fairly new school at that point, it was only three years old.
You think I suggested that?
You did, in a meeting.
I'd like to know what that was.
And to solve the overcrowded situation we had over there. And so, you know, what we wanna do is make enough space for the students, 'cause we want them to be comfortable. We want the teachers and administrators to be able to have enough space so they can adequately do their jobs. And we'd like to improve the outcome of this district as far as our state rating as a district. I believe we're at a 2.5 star now, is that correct?
I do not...
So, I think we're...
No, I think we're three overall.
Okay, so, the last online was 2.5, so we're either 2.5 or three, and I know when we look at a neighboring district, like Perry, they're a five-star district, okay? So, we have a lot of room to cover, and you can't do that when you're overcrowding students and putting students in, in areas like over at Buckeye, where you have one space with partitions, and you have four different teaching things going on in one space, and you can hear each other. It's not conducive for, for, for good outcomes, and so, in creating this eight-classroom addition, yes, we are solving the overcrowded conditions right now, and we're solving that problem, and then also creating space for the years to come, and that's not gonna be enough space. When we get about five, six years down the road, that's not gonna be enough space, and there's gonna be another move that's gonna need to be made, but we won't talk about that right now.
Well, I think that's unfortunate, because I think the community was under the impression, when we started this project, the conversation at this table was that we were creating spaces for new stu, the influx of new students coming in from developments, and I don't think we're doing that. We're housing in eight classrooms, we are moving people around and housing preschool and moving preschool over there. We are not creating space for new students. I just want...
We are absolutely creating space for new students. Now, do you think 15 houses get built in one year?
We're not creating, we are not creating space for new students. That's all I'm gonna say, and I would like some documentation on record, like of when I suggested that we put a trailer at Riverview.
Well, I don't think I'll go back and look at all those meetings.
Well, you probably should.
But I remember you saying it.
Because if you're going to say that, then you should really come back and tell me when I said that, because I don't think I've ever said that.
Yeah, I remember you saying that, and we said, "No, we're not putting the trailer over there."
You said, "No," like...
That was a consensus.
Really? Well, then, if that was a consensus, please bring me the data.
So, anyway, the...
Mr. Fishel, if I get interrupted, we are three and a half stars as a legislature.
Okay, good, so we're three and a half, and we have another star and a half to go.
We're getting it.
Okay, so, so we have a lot of room to cover, and, and we wanna be a five-star district, and I know that when I was elected to the board, my statement was, and still remains, "I wanna make Riverside the gold standard," and, and so, we wanna, we wanna elevate ourselves to that five-star rating. So, yes, we have some territory to cover, and we need the space to have proper teaching areas and also learning areas. And so, Ms. Grassi, when you're building 1,500 homes, and they're all ready to get started, you are, you have to have space for those kids to come in, and those houses will not all be built in one year. It will take over 10 years for all of that to be built, and you need to be prepared. So, the, the statement is, yes, we are creating space for the new students to come in. Okay, any further discussion? Gary, can you take the roll?
Linda Grassi?
Nay.
Scott Fishel?
Aye.
Dennis Keeney?
Aye.
Denise Brewster?
Aye.
Okay, advanced to, well, first, the next item is advanced to the PI fund. It was noted at $500,000, and I had amended the agenda to move the furniture, the $200,000 cost from the 2025 to the 2026 PI statement, and so, can I get a second on that?
Second.
Any discussion?
This is to move the 200?
Yeah, just, 'cause we're not gonna purchase it until after July 1st, anyway.
Denise, was a second on that?
Yes. Okay, Gary, can you take the roll?
Scott Fishel?
Aye.
Dennis Keeney?
Aye.
Denise Brewster?
Aye.
Linda Grassi?
Aye.
Okay, and then the next item on the agenda is advanced to the PI fund. Resolution to approve an advance from the general fund to the permanent improvement fund in the amount of $500,000. Funds to be returned to the general fund in fiscal year 2026. Can I get a second? Thank you, and discussion on that is that, Gary, you and I talked about this yesterday, and I think that maybe you wanna amend that at this time to change that number.
Yeah, we had talked that, because the, when, when I, creating the board agenda has to be done 48 hours in advance of the meeting, and the initial close GMP numbers I had gotten from Roger were a little bit higher than what was the ultimate final number that we had gotten after the agenda was released. So, I'm comfortable with reducing it to 325,000 based on, on that information. You know, there is going to be a cost for abatement that's gonna come with the CTE addition that'll have to happen this fiscal year. I'm not sure what that cost estimate is at this point. They were finishing up that study yesterday, and so, there's an unknown there, so we might have to adjust this back up. So we might have to adjust this backup at some point, depending on what that looks like. But we, I'm comfortable flooring it at this time, and then, but if we have to make that.
Given the limited reports of that, that I found out last night, I would perhaps maybe adjust a little bit. It may be a little more expensive than anticipated to abate.
How much are they thinking?
I have not heard any numbers. I've just heard that there's a lot more than the abating that's going to be needed than they have anticipated.
Can we just leave this at 500 and give you the flexibility? Because just because we approve 500 doesn't mean you have to actually move.
Yeah, so we're moving $200,000 off of this year.
I realize that, but we're going to have abatement.
So there's 200,000. And Roger was saying it's not going to be real expensive as far as abating.
I think he got the news last night, and I think it's more than in the morning when we discussed.
Can you explain what this abatement is exactly?
They have to go through and make sure that all the asbestos is removed in any of the areas that they're working on.
So this is for the campus.
For the CTE.
For the CTE, for the campus.
Yeah, they're, just to be clear, the report, River View is moot because it's new and there's nothing there. So the abatement at River View, there was a report done, just to make sure, okay, there's nothing needed there. This, we're going into an old building, and you're going to run into asbestos in places, and it has to be abated. And so, what it comes down to is what's the cost of abatement? And so, the question is, is it going from 20,000 to 40,000? You know, so the question is, how much will that be?
I don't have a number at this point.
Right, right. And that's what I was saying. Roger was saying that the general amount of the abatement would not be a real high number. So we've been increasing considerably the amount that it was. I'm not so sure it's going to be a lot. We will find out.
I, I'm hoping to find out either end of today or Monday. More likely Monday is precision.
But we could have done it at the next board meeting if we had an exact figure. And is that abatement going to be before July 1 or after?
It has to be this year.
It has to be this year, guaranteed. Okay.
The issue we have, so with this advance, because the next item is the permanent appropriations. So we don't have enough appropriated to sign these contracts. And that advance was needed because you can't appropriate more than your available resources. So you have to have that advance in the permanent improvement fund in order to increase the appropriations enough to sign these construction contracts. So if we, if we don't approve the advance today or if we reduce the advance today, we'd have to adjust the appropriation agenda next to accommodate that. If you don't approve the advance and I have to reduce the appropriation by $500,000, now I don't have enough appropriation to sign the construction contract.
If you have 325, do you have enough to sign the appropriate?
325 would be enough. And if we have to advance more later, we'd have to.
We could.
The board resolution does have to match what we post in our accounting system. So we can't do like a limit. It has to be the exact amount.
Right, so let me ask you, moving the $200,000 out of this fiscal year, does that change our balance this year?
It would give us, that would, it would, I think if we did the 325,000 advance instead of 500, taking that furniture out to next year would give us the room if we needed.
It gives us $525,000 in assets, right?
Does that mean you're not going to encumber that this year?
The furniture would be encumbered next.
It would have to be encumbered next year. It's still the same thing. So I'm just going to, I'm just going to go on record as saying that I think this is like tricky business here, advancing back and forth and back and forth because we don't have enough dollars to certify a contract. My personal budgetary philosophy is if you don't have money to afford a contract, instead of moving dollars back and forth from another fund that can't really afford it into the future, maybe you should rethink what you've got on your grant. So I'm not a fan. I'm not a fan, so it doesn't, and I understand, like, it puts you between a rock and a hard place. I get it. You need to, you need to do the advance in order to be able to certify contracts that this board has already approved. I'm not a fan, so I'm still voting no. But I realize that would put you in a predicament, because you've got to be able to have the dollars available.
And so.
Without a transfer, you can't do that. But transferring dollars back and forth, again, it just kicks the can down the road. And our general fund cannot afford that.
So it doesn't affect the general fund at all? This money will be replaced. When do we start receiving PI tax money in 20, in our next fiscal year?
It'd be, we get our first advance in July. Whatever we advance now would be returned in July.
Right.
Advancing $500,000 now to PI and returning it in July, or 325,000, doesn't really change the financial picture for the general funds. It's still a, it's still a net zero per se. It's just, it's a timing between fiscal years. But what's more important is the actual expenditures in the PI fund and that lower cash balance in the PI fund. It's still the concern.
Right, so I'll ask you again, the $200,000 that's being moved from 2025 to 2026, does that open up $200,000 more in 2025?
It would give us room to approve the purchase order for the abatement, depending on what that amount is.
So, so thank you. So it leaves us sufficient money even for additional abatement money.
It's like robbing Peter to pay Paul. You take it and you can allow it now in 2025, but it just takes it away from 2026. It's the same difference. Like, it's semantics. You guys are arguing semantics. We still don't have the dollars.
So Ms. Grassi, I don't know if you heard earlier, but there's going to be a $206,000 savings. So that'll net zero out that $200 cost. So that is not an accurate data.
You think there might be that. You don't know that for sure. It depends on, and we haven't heard from Mr. Purcell on how that payment plan will work.
So I have been in contact with Mr. Purcell, and so that we will have a $206,000 savings.
And can you explain who Mr. Purcell is? Folks, can you explain who he is?
Yeah, Mr. Purcell is our financial liaison.
Municipal advisor.
Municipal advisor.
Okay, thank you.
The district has worked with before when the Parkside and River View were built, right? So he's the person that gets the loan money. He sells a bond in Chicago, basically, and has a loan.
He helps us do that process. He's more fiduciary to the district. He represents us. He's not necessarily the person we're borrowing from. He works with the underwriters that actually do the borrowing on the mortgage.
And we recently met with him, and he explained a lot to us on how, you know, some of the interests of that money is going to offset any, you know, repayment.
There's a lot of different moving parts. And, and the whole picture has to be put together effectively so that we're getting the maximum use out of our dollars and what it's costing us is the least amount possible. So there are a lot of moving parts. Way too complicated to describe right here at the table. But as we move into that situation and we go to borrow that money for the next project, then all of those details will be explained so that everyone can understand it.
So my thought, again, I will just continue to say it, is wouldn't it have been nice had we had all those moving parts in, in all of our ducks in a row prior to requesting and passing board agenda items to put additions on? We should have had all that done.
No, that has no effect on what we're doing now. That affects what we're doing in the future.
We should have had all that planned out.
So, so that affects what we're doing in the future and doesn't have any effect on this picture today.
I have a question on one of those moving parts. This new gas line that we're going to need to service the campus, which was kind of an unexpected, you know, event. Would that be paid out of '25 or '26 fiscal year?
It depends on, because right now, we're not sure if Enbridge is going to do that or it's like, what cost is going to fall on the district and what the Enbridge is going to do on our behalf. Depending on the timeline of that, it's because, you know, July 1 is the new fiscal year. I'm not sure what the timing is going to be on that. So we'll have to kind of, I'm not sure, I'm not quite sure. I mean, it's.
Well, we just.
I'm not sure what the length of time is to do that. Obviously, the time to move the gas line would have to be during the summer, because they'd have to shut off.
Right, we just discussed that. That's not going to get done for a while, because we don't even know what the options yet are.
Right, I just wanted to.
Right, Chuck, we got to talk with Ash Dabula and their administrative offices to even begin to understand.
Good morning Riverside, these are not your announcements.
To begin to understand even what our options are. So that's not going to happen in the next couple of weeks.
No.
Yeah, that's going to take a little bit of time. But it does have to be done.
We do need to move on quickly. We're going to try to get it done.
Needs to be moved on quickly, but we need guidance, and we need to find out what regulations are.
Absolutely.
What our approved options are. And then we have to go ahead and get pricing and execute, yeah.
Yeah, one of the questions I have, Gary, when, for example, you know, as schools are winding down and administrators and staff are creating purchase orders, you know, they're, they're pretty much, at least the practice that I had over 42 years, is they're dated July 1. In other words, it's for the new fiscal year. So how does that work with your office on some of these things?
I mean, these purchase orders will be dated now. We do have a cutoff for general fund purchase orders that, I think it's today actually is our cutoff. And then anything is dated July 1 going forward. But anything that needs to be ordered before July 1, you get to issue that purchase order now.
Right, okay.
So it's kind of depends. Typically, we allow for maintenance type of emergency type of things.
Right.
And, you know, grant funds that, you know, need to be.
I knew that there was the, you close it down to have that period, and then everything else going forward is dated July 1, new fiscal year. Okay.
Okay. Okay, so Gary, you want to make an amendment or move to amend the agenda? I move to, I'll do it. I'll move to amend the agenda on item C. The resolution to change it from $500,000 to $325,000. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Gary, can you take the roll?
Scott Fishel?
Aye.
Daneski?
Aye.
Denise Brewster?
Aye.
Glenda Grassi?
Nay.
Okay, motion carried. So the, the agenda has, has been amended. And I make a resolution to approve an advance from the general fund to the permanent improvement fund in the amount of $325,000. Funds to be returned to the general fund in fiscal year 2026. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Gary, can you take the roll?
Scott Fishel?
Aye.
Daneski?
Aye.
Denise Brewster?
Aye.
Glenda Grassi?
Nay.
Motion?
Yes.
Motion carried.
At this point, we'll need to revise the next agenda item. Because we reduced that advance by $175,000. We'll need to reduce the permanent improvement levy fund appropriation by $175,000. So I'll need someone to make that adjustment. Otherwise, if we approve this agenda item as is, we'd create a budgetary law violation because we'd be appropriating more funds than are available to that fund.
Okay, so I move to amend the agenda to, Mr. Placo, verbiage?
I amend the agenda to revise the permanent appropriation for Fund 033 to reduce the amount by $175,000.
To reduce the permanent appropriations for fiscal year 2025 by $175,000?
Yeah.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Can you take the roll, please?
Scott Fishel?
Aye.
Daneski?
Aye.
Denise Brewster?
Aye.
Glenda Grassi?
Aye.
Motion carried. And Board of Education discussion, treasurer search discussion.
Now, we actually vote on the appropriations now.
Oh, okay, sorry. We amended the agenda. Sorry, sorry, sorry. Okay, so resolution to approve revision to the permanent appropriations for fiscal year 2025. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Gary, can you take the roll?
Scott Fishel?
Aye.
Daneski?
Aye.
Denise Brewster?
Aye.
Glenda Grassi?
Nay.
Motion carried. Okay, Board of Education discussion, treasurer search discussion. The board will discuss the search process for a new treasurer CFO. And I know there's been some dialogue already and some input from different places already. And I know that I was with the belief that we could handle that internally. And certainly, our attorney could put out notice. And the notice would be seen by pretty much everyone that any other entity would put out a notice and would be seen by. And so, I don't think we're missing anyone. And so, that's my opinion. Is there any other discussion or input?
Yeah, if, if we're not going to use a search from like OSBA, I'm in favor of just doing the search internally. And I think our own HR department can handle the collection of documentation that we get and make sure that it is disseminated to the board members. I'm fine with that. But I just want to make sure that if we're going to do that, that we actually do advertise it on OSBA, because they do have non-postings, that other searches that they are not doing. And I think OASB does that as well.
Yeah, OASB does that too. So there's a thing we can post it on, and they actually send a weekly email to all.
Right.
And does there, who posts it on the state, on the ODE website? You know, like that, that general education site where you can look for jobs across the state?
I think we can. We have to email, that's the Ohio Main job site. I think we.
Yeah, I don't know what it is. I don't know where it is located, but I know that, like, you can do administrative searches there.
We could also send it out to ESC of NEO, and they will, they will broadcast it to their.
So can we make, if we're going to put that out ourselves, and can we make sure that we, we're going to obviously update the information from our superintendent's search so that we have that, that.
Oh, I, I.
Because that's pretty standard.
That's part of the discussion, is what do we want to put with it? Where do we want to post it? Do we want to set our page on the website to kind of say further treasurer search information? What questions do we want to ask with the application process? Are there interview questions, are there essay questions that the board would like? We can kind of put together some samples of some.
I think, Gary, you would, you would have a lot of that information, right?
We, I mean, we, like the brochure type of stuff, like what information would drop there? We can just kind of recreate what we've done for the superintendent's search. A lot of times, though, when you, when you put out these type of job application advertisements in that brochure, it mentions like first round interview dates, second round interview dates, anticipated start date. Obviously, it had to be flexible for, depending on who applies and candidates and things like that. But a lot of times, that information is put out there. That way, people are applying no timelines in case they have travel permits or other permits or.
But, yeah, if, if you can put it together, that should be a template, right?
We would just need to know how long do we want to post it for? When do we want to do first round interviews and second round interviews?
I think providing a week of, at this point, since Mr. Chris is not here, might be a good thing.
Well, and I also, I also think that we, like, is it reasonable to expect that we can get it posted next week? Like, by the end of next week? Do you know what I'm saying? Like, is a week enough time? Is that, I mean, that's just kind of pulling some information together and creating.
We'd be in context, get some feedback. I think the issue would be, and I think I may include Mr. McIntyre in terms of, when we send out, all the correspondence would have to come through one of us and not between board members.
Correct.
So we would send it out and say, here's our, you know, please provide feedback. Then we would continue to send out an email as to what the posting looks like. The questions potentially, like I said, for the application process. We would explore, we do have frontlines. We would explore kind of what our, our online application looks like, what kind of materials you are looking for. Obviously, we would ask for references. You know, we would ask for, you know, the standard license, those sorts of things as well. I think we would want to make sure we have ahead of time.
I think there's a lot of standard items, right?
There are many standards. Do we want anything? Do you want transcripts?
Well, then, part of it is, are there any questions that you want included?
I would specifically like to make sure that we get a credentialed individual who also holds their CPA license in addition to their school treasurer's license.
So that's a preferred.
That is for me.
We will put that in a listing?
Right, right.
So we'll get a listing together as well, kind of what the preferred credentials are?
You know, how many years of experience are we looking for? You know, those kinds of things. I think that is really, really, really important, because I don't want to get a candidate with one year of experience. That's just no. Just putting that out there, that's not.
So what's your, what's your minimum years of experience, in your opinion, that you would like to have?
I don't know, Gary, like, right? I mean, it depends. I think it depends on where they come from.
Depends on what kind of experience you're looking for, because I was.
Gary didn't have treasurer's experience. Gary didn't have treasurer's experience.
I was not a treasurer until I was hired here, but I had assistant and auditor experience and try see experience that.
So I think it, it matters where that comes from.
As opposed to.
I, I think that's the best way to say it.
Okay.
You know, and then we'll indicate what our situation is that we do have an assistant treasurer and, and what. So they understand our situation. In other words, it just isn't a treasurer that does all of the above. It's that we have an assistant.
If we can get this out by the 16th, would it be reasonable, Mallory, to assume that we could, we could have interviews like by the first week of June? Do you know what I mean? Is that too fast? Like, what are, what are, what are those positions usually open? How long do they usually open?
Usually three to four weeks.
Three to four?
Yeah, you, it's a, it's a pretty thorough, you want to make sure that you cast the net as far as you can and the network as well, and then you also give a couple.
I mean, people are already looking, so it's not like you're not going to.
You're giving weekends to fill it out. We can monitor as they come in, applications that come in. We can kind of monitor their numbers and provide.
I mean, but if we're going to provide dates in that brochure that we have to send out, like, do we want to be doing first rounds of interviews like the week of the 9th and then, it depends on how many candidates you have, so you can't really determine how long it's going to take to get those through. I just want to make sure that we include all board members and that everybody's going to be around when we want to do this.
I could potentially send out doodle polls as well for first and second rounds.
And my, my suggestion for the interviews would be Monday, June 16th would be the start. The reason I say that is I'll be out of town the week previous to that.
That's fine.
Okay. And, and so that should give us the approximate month, three, four weeks that you're talking about, Gary, right?
We would potentially want to make it the 17th and schedule a meeting the 16th to paper screen the week. So you want, the board is going to come together, look at the applicants and see what we might for interviews. And if there, if there are some who we don't. Or we can do that virtually, but again, that's where it could become, it might be better to do in person as a.
Yeah, you have to do in person.
Yeah, yeah, it'd be a board meeting, yeah.
When are you leaving, Mr. Fischel?
It'll be that week.
Just the week of the 8th or whatever?
Yes. So the 8th, 9th, right, so 7th, 8th, 9th. So, right, so I'll be back for that Monday.
So I will.
The 16th, because, yeah, the 16th.
So.
Well, the 12th through the 19th, I'm out of the country.
You're out of the country?
Yeah.
So you're back here on the 20th?
Yeah.
So what are we talking about then?
Could we, could we at least maybe?
That's a Friday?
Meet the 6th, 5th or 6th to like decide who we would like to invite for interviews and then schedule them for, that's two weeks though.
That's only given a two week.
That's a, that's a short window.
I mean, I'm here on the 11th. I mean, we could do a pre-screening. We would have gotten some things.
Well, I believe Mr. Fischel's out of town then, right?
Oh, is that when you're out of town?
He could send it, well, I guess we might have a discussion.
Well, is the 11th a Friday?
The 11th is Wednesday. It's Wednesday and the 11th.
Oh, well, I'm sorry, right, I'm out that week, that whole week.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, we're going to get into vacations.
We've also had interviews, I'm just throwing this out there. We have done interviews and whatnot on Saturdays before. I know we have because people work or whatever, and I'm just.
It's okay with me to do interviews any day of the week.
Any day of the week.
Um, we, what we're talking about right now is just screening.
When are you back?
Like, are we going to interview everyone or are we going to screen or is it going to be dependent on how many people apply?
I think you'll probably be able to leave some people out.
Okay.
I, I would say it also depends on our applicant pool.
So we'll pre-screen and, and let's pick a date.
Well, I mean, we can do the 20th if you want to.
Wait, wait, what's the?
Or you want it before then?
What's the, what's the Friday? Is that the 20th?
For screening?
Friday's the 20th.
Um, I would suggest that you send out a some, something. I want to make sure Mrs. Krensky.
Right, we'll make sure she can be here. So it's, it's June 20th, so let's, let's make sure she can be here, but let's assume that's the date.
Morning, evening. She's better with the evenings. She can't do mornings.
Yeah, after work, so like 6?
Oh, I don't care. I could do one or we do five.
Okay, five.
Whatever, whatever works for her. I can do it.
Okay, why, why don't you talk with Ms. Krensky to see, if she can make it at 5, let's do 5. You know, whatever, however early she can make it.
Okay.
But let's just say tentatively 5.
Tentatively 5, if she can do 4, it's 4, okay?
That's fine with me.
Yeah, yeah, all that's fine if she can make it earlier.
Obviously, the earliest.
Obviously, the people that work here would like it earlier.
You know, the, the.
Right.
I don't know that they need to attend, really, other than Chris.
Yeah, it would be an executive session.
Yeah, it'd be an executive session just to get the meeting going, so.
But it would, I, I would like to hear Gary's perspective on replacements.
He might know the candidates.
Right, I think that input might be helpful.
At that point too, we'll have some questions to look at, some, develop some perspective questions for first round and second round.
Well, and if we are, I mean, we can preliminarily be doing that also.
Right. Each board member might have a question or two or whatever, but I think it's important, Gary, that you would put together some questions since, since it's your field of expertise, right? That template, I think, would be valuable.
So our, so if I'm hearing this correctly, our goal would be to have this out by next week, sometime next week.
Our goal would be to have it posted by next week. That gives it to run approximately a month.
Okay.
Right.
By the time we pre-screen. We'll set some dates. We'll get some stuff together to, to do that, to run a month. And then we would move the 20th and then we would, at the following week, we'd want to set up. I'll send out some other dates for potential first rounds.
I would think the application deadline is like June 16th on Monday. That way people have to prompt that last weekend.
Right.
And then we have, then we have a couple days.
Well, we could also share how many. At that point, we can give you information on that. We will send it all in a packet in the PDF.
Maybe it's first round interviews.
First, so you mean that they have a tie.
The week of the 23rd, which we have a regular meeting that week. So even if we do something in conjunction with a regular meeting, you know, something like that, and then.
Did Orange make you do a project? Did they make you do something?
There was, for the second round, they had.
For the second round?
They had a, they had basically the candidates review the five-year forecast and monthly reports. This tells what you saw.
Right, okay. I just want to make sure that we're on top of that, right?
They make you give like three different scenarios based on the House bill that passed?
No, we're going to ask them, we will be asking them to predict the House bill.
Run and hide, right, that was, yeah.
Yeah, if we interview on the 23rd, we can ask them to predict what it will look like. Um, that would be fine. I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page that we're getting meetings going to set, schedule. And I know that Mrs. Krensky will appreciate at least advance notice. If we say 4 o'clock, she should be able to.
This information will most likely come out middle of next week. I'm out of town this weekend, and I do have some personal stuff I need to fix.
Okay, well, we'll make sure the timeframe works for Ms. Krensky and she can let us know.
We will confirm it.
Yeah.
Oh, man.
Okay. And then we'll run it, the actual posting, posting will probably want to run by Dan as well.
Okay, so are we set on that? Okay. And then B is protocols for administrative vacancies discussion. The Board of Education will discuss hiring protocols for current and anticipated administrative vacancies. I know that we're going to be doing interviews, right?
We do. We have an exciting month of interviews and every, and awards and everything else.
And so with that, I think it's important, we, we have Ms. Brewster has 42 years of educational experience. So I make a motion to appoint Ms. Brewster to be a board member involved in, in the interview, in those interviews. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Do we generally have board members involved in administrative? We don't usually do that. We just.
I've been a participant in, actually, when I interviewed for West Yaga, there was a board member on, on the committee and appointed by the superintendent and, you know, I, I have good memories of that, hearing from the board member and, and talking with him and established a really good relationship going forward. So I think other districts do it. I don't know if you have.
It's never been a thing here specifically. I think it's, I don't think it's as common, but we don't have a problem inviting Mr. Brewster as a part of it. I think we did send you the invites for those times.
Yeah, I didn't respond depending on what this.
So that's, those are when we have them scheduled. We'll give you more dates as we work through them.
Okay.
Okay. Um, okay, Gary, can you take the roll?
Scott Fischel?
Aye.
Dennis Keeney?
Aye.
Denise Brewster?
Aye.
Linda Grassi?
What are we voting on?
Made a resolution of Ms. Brewster attending the interviews for the admin positions.
Nay. There's no, did we prove an amendment to the, that's not the.
I just, I made a resolution, yeah. I didn't amend the agenda.
Is that okay, Dan? I mean, it's.
Yep, so it falls under that.
Yeah.
I mean, if you're more comfortable, you can go back, amend the agenda and then.
Well, we don't need to, right? Make a resolution, yeah, so, yeah, that's carried. Next meeting announcement, Finance Personnel Committee, May 15th, 8:00 a.m. Buckeye Ad hoc Committee meeting, May 19th, 2:30 p.m. Buildings and Grounds, May 20th, 7:30 a.m. Records Commission's meeting, May 22nd, 4:45 p.m. Board of Education meeting, May 22nd, 5:00 p.m.
And the Records Commission meeting, that's.
We're, it's, the Records Commission is the superintendent treasurer and board president, and required by law to have an annual meeting this year. So basically, we review the records retention schedule and talk about any disposals that are happening.
All right, thank you.
Can I make a motion to adjourn at 9:12 a.m.? Can I get a second?
I'll go.
Thank you. Gary, take the roll.
Linda Grassi?
Aye.
Scott Fischel?
Aye.
Dennis Keeney?
Aye.
Denise Brewster?
Aye.
Motion carried.